Plus, I'm just so not ready to be senior.
Call North Reading School Committee meeting to order for April 29th. I want to congratulate the selectmen. They just put on a tremendous ceremony tonight to honor North Reading law enforcement and other residents who are involved in the rescue efforts at the marathon following the terror attack and who also helped to track down the cowards who perpetrated that attack. And it was a really nice ceremony organized by the selectmen and the town administrator, and they had Representative Jones there and Senator Tar and the three officers from North Reading. So, I want to thank the selectmen for inviting us to that. It was a really nice opportunity to honor some brave North Reading residents and public officials. So, getting onto our regular agenda, the first item as always is public input. Is there anybody who wishes to be heard on any items that are not on the agenda tonight? Okay. Seeing no one, next we'll move to the student report, and tonight we have Madison Capazudo. Madison?
Hi. Okay, so for the student report, I'm going to start with the half day that we had last Thursday, the half day that we have this Sunday, Friday, which is district-wide as opposed to the last week, which was just for the high school for the accreditation. Junior prom was held last Friday, April 26th, at the Hillview Country Club. I'm very happy to report that it was fun, successful, there were no issues. In addition to some of the food changes that we had this year, seeing as the Hillview was recently taken over by The Horseshoe, we also had a photo booth at prom this year, which was sort of a strategic move by, actually it was the three other officers, I really can't even take any credit for it because it was their idea. And what we did was typically, you know, when you're thinking about the decorations and everything else that goes into planning the prom, one of the things you have to worry about is printing the tickets and then some sort of favor for all of the attendance. And so, what Christina Fusco, who's our vice president, what she had suggested, and what we ended up doing was, in order to pay for this photo booth which we rented, we had saved on printing tickets, we forwent, forwent, is that a word?
Yep.
Forwent the ticket printing, and also instead of paying like seven or eight dollars apiece for the picture frame, which more often than not gets put somewhere and collects dust, we actually sort of doubled the favor as your ticket, and we got these little keychains that say "North Reading Junior Prom 2013" with the date, April 26th, and it sort of doubled as your ticket, and we paid far less for these than we would have for picture frames.
Very nice.
And so, with the money we saved for that, we were able to rent the photo booth, and it was a big hit, everybody loved it. I should have brought in some of the strips, I didn't even think of it. So, yeah, it was very fun. And just as a side note to that, also Mr. Lee of The Horseshoe is coming in tomorrow to speak to the marketing class for our presentation and question and answer segment. So, we're looking forward to that. Another side note of prom, the prom court was Matt Layton, Hannah Lesch, Jen McNeil, Jake LaRoche, Colin McCauley, Megan O'Brien, Delaney Rowe, and Ned Madden, and crowned prom king and queen were Scott Allen and Nicole Nelson, respectively. Varsity baseball, won against Triton Saturday, 10-0, they are currently undefeated and ranked sixth in the state. Boys lacrosse, won against Georgetown also on Saturday. Boys and girls varsity track, had their state relays yesterday. The four-by-one mile record was broken by a team of Jenna Crawford, Nicole and Rachel Roberts, and Colleen Fitzpatrick. Boys tennis is currently undefeated, 5-0. Softball, beat Masconom at Thursday, they had a game today at Georgetown. Student council is planning to attend the Walk for Hunger this Sunday, May 5th. We have a bake sale tomorrow, we're donating all the proceeds to the Walk for Hunger. Peter Salitis and Ryan Sanborn of the junior class have recently taken to collecting for the One Fund in Boston. They've been setting up side lunches, collecting and handing out bracelets, and then that concludes the student report. So, for student work, I brought along with me a project that has been ongoing in my psychology class for a few weeks now. It is a virtual parenting project, which I have found very entertaining, if nothing else.
Glad you do.
It's versatile.
Enjoy it now.
So, I brought with you, this is my daughter, her name is Lila. So, each student is given a little colored bear. The bear has to come to class each and every day if you should be absent for one day. Because we have the green and gold day scheduling, we're to visit Ms. Tully, who's the psychology teacher, the following day regardless of the fact that we don't have that actual class that day to show her during lunch that the child is being well cared for and has not gone missing. They are color-coded for gender, you get to name them, and so that's the first half of the project, is making sure that the bear isn't chewed up by the family dog, that is coming to class every day, there are no weird strings hanging off, or stuffing coming out, the tag isn't missing, or anything like that. And the second part is going along with all of the criteria that we are learning in class about developmental psychology, because that's the unit that we are in. We are given a series of prompts to answer, sort of in essay form, but a little less formal, and I brought with me the parenting entry, the preparing entry, cognitive development, and what's the, uh, moral development, and adolescent rebellion, and that's sort of where we've left off, so.
That's a good place to leave off.
Wanna?
In fact, you might want to stop right there.
Adolescent rebellion.
Get it all together if you'd better.
Just skim through. And, yeah, that's it, unless there are any questions.
I got the adolescent rebellion right here.
Great report. I think the girls' track team actually finished fifth in the state in Division Four. And our spring sports teams are just having outstanding seasons.
They're on fire, just like our winter sports teams were and our fall sports teams were.
Any questions for Madison?
The only thing, Madison, you said you weren't going to take credit, the other three officers, they're not here, you are, so you should be taking full credit.
Oh, no, no, no. I couldn't, it really-
There's a moral responsibility segment in the psychology.
Right.
Well, to be honest, when they first said the photo booth, and I was like, oh, I don't know, nobody would use it, do you really think we need it? And I was so wrong, everybody loved it, and it was great. Like I said, I wish that I brought in some of the strips, it was really fun. One of the benefits of the company that we did use is you can go online after, because they only print two strips for you, you can go online with a password, you can retrieve all the photos that were taken, so it was really fun, and definitely, definitely worth it, so.
I do have one question for you. How did you figure out that during the first year, your baby cost $8,677? Because I think it's higher than that, but I'm just wondering.
There was this really resourceful website that we were directed to use, and it gave you like a whole checklist of all the things you anticipated on buying, and for how long, for example, like formula, cloth diapers versus disposable diapers, do you want a jogging stroller, a regular stroller, what types of, that sort of thing, so. And then, once you were done, you sort of like refreshed the page, and it gave you a total for the first year.
I thought it was actually higher, I mean, it's a lot of money, but I thought it was actually higher.
I was trying to be very, um-
You guys have got to, you gotta read this adolescent rebellion part. Take a look at it.
The thing with that, we had, we were to dump all of the children, for lack of a better word, into a bag, and everybody had to grab someone else's, and they are labeled by number, and that's how you keep track of who's his who's. And somebody else had to give you a scenario, you know, your child did X, Y, and Z.
Is that where that came from?
Yes.
Okay.
And you were to, for the homework assignment, you were to respond how you would-
But you said in that, after all that, I tried not to yell.
Yeah, well, if you read the parenting style entry, you had to comply with how you said you were going to parent your child from the beginning, and I had initially said that.
Oh, I don't even want to read the rest, I just read the first line, I don't want to read the rest of that. Well, thank you, Madison.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Madison.
Three years compared.
Excellent job. We have, so for the middle school students who are bringing up next, when you get into high school, this is an opportunity you have, because we have four or five, five students who I think are elected to their positions, and they are the student representatives of the school committee. And each meeting, one of the students comes in and gives a report on what's going on at the school, and then tells us a little bit about their schoolwork. And we never know what we're going to get, but they're always fun, and it helps us to keep up to speed on the, on the high school. Thanks, Madison.
You're welcome.
Great job. Okay, so now we'll go from, one, a great student, to a group of great students, and we have Mr. Mark Gorgani from the middle school, and we have a group of students who participated in the recent Science Olympiad at Assumption College, and they finished in third place in the state, and they're here tonight to tell us what they did and to show us their work.
Well, we'd like to thank you for inviting us and for giving us this opportunity, just to share with you a little bit, just to give you a taste of what we do, and each student will kind of share a different component of what is involved throughout the year, getting us from beginning to end. But let me give you a little introduction of what Science Olympiad is. It is a national science enrichment program, which is comprised of 23 events from about four different areas of science. And each event has a different type of assessment. It can be from building things, which is a very small component of the competition, there's only about four events that require some sort of device to be built. And then the rest are science inquiry, to preparing for a particular subject, like heredity, anatomy, and then taking an open-ended response type of question test, to a multiple choice question test, and then even there's some laboratories, that type of assessments, where students will test and analyze, and their results are their assessment. So, yeah, so it is, so we have, out of these four students, they actually represent 12 of the 23 events. So, each, we are only allowed 15 students for a team, so each student takes on about four events, and they have about 20 weeks from October to, October to March to prepare, and the preparation varies, and some of them will share with you what preparation entails. This is our fifth year, and we've been very successful all five years, but mainly the last three years. We've been third place, second place, and then third place again. So, it's needless to say, I'm extremely proud of all of them that are here. I was just reminded the other day that a lot of them are, or were, are on this team because I did an elementary school presentation. I went down, I presented to the fifth grade, and this was the result. So, I'm happy to say that in May, the end of May, I'll be going back to the elementary schools and presenting, and going down to the farm league, you know, hopefully prepare the future. So, we have Noah, Carly, Julia, and Brooke, and I kind of have seven questions, I'll just kind of popcorn throughout all of them, and hopefully, again, just kind of give you an idea of what it is. So, first, I'm going to have them list their events. So, Noah, tell them all what your events were.
I participated in rotor egg drop, road scholar, reach for the stars, and sound of music.
And for rotor egg drop, we have the rotor egg drop here. Just kind of explain what you had to accomplish for those 20 weeks, what was your goal?
So, we had to build a device that would carry an egg that would spin around and be dropped from like around 30 feet and hit the ground and still survive, like make the egg not break. That was, that was the goal.
If you, if you pick it up and drop it, you can see what we'll add up to, this is pretty neat, it's very light, and so as soon as I let it go, and you can imagine at 30 feet, that thing starts spinning, and did extremely well, so I think we pulled fourth or third on that one. Tell them what your favorite part of the tournament was.
I liked being in the college campus, you know, it was just so, it's a surreal feeling, you know, going around and see all these different science laboratories, and all these different buildings and structures, and the other devices that the team, all the teams were building, it was very, very neat.
It's great, it's a great opportunity. The person that runs the Massachusetts Science Olympiad is a college professor at Assumption, so he gives us all the great opportunity of going to that college campus and using it, different buildings, mainly in the science building, very new, state-of-the-art science building, like our new high school building. And it's just so neat to be there, and they all want to say it, but they won't, but the food is fabulous.
That's what all college kids-
They make this buffet from omelets to pizza to sandwiches, and you want them to say "science" first, but it's always the food, every time. All right, so Carly, tell them what your events were.
The events that I did were crime busters, disease detectives, write it, do it, and meteorology.
And what was your competition, pick two of your competitions and tell them what it was like on that day on March 19th?
Well, you basically just ran around to the different buildings, whatever your event was in, and whatever the, you either took a test, or tested some sort of thing that you built, or did a scenario that would involve the things that you learned in your event.
And then when did you find out, how'd you do?
At the very end, they have a big award ceremony, and it's really cool, because everyone just sits on the ground, and they announce what you got, you can get ribbons or medals, and at the end you get trophies.
It's really exciting, I mean, that's probably second to the food, is sitting in that award ceremony, just anxiously awaiting, when your name is called or your event is called, as you can see, they're wearing their medals, and it's just fabulous to know that they can walk up there, receive a medal, and then when we get a team trophy, that's just, there's 28 cities that were, or towns that were competing against, so being in the top three is really a proponent, so.
That's awesome.
And these towns, and you know, like towns like Lexington and Sudbury, they kind of snub at you when you walk up there, because they've been working just as hard, so it's really, it really is an honor, it really is a proud moment for us.
Was Lynnfield in there, Mike?
I knew you were going to say-
Did we beat them?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Forgot to mention there were charter schools in there, too.
Absolutely, yes, that's been a new addition the last couple of years, yes. All right, Julia, tell us what your events were.
I studied disease detectives, heredity, and reach for the stars.
And just, what did you do, pick, let's say you reached for the stars, what did you do throughout the year to prepare for that?
Throughout the year, we had to, well, they gave us a list about what we needed to know at the competition, and so we took notes, and we made PowerPoints, and we did all that we could to like memorize different constellations and stars, and make study guides for ourselves, and prepared the best we could.
And what was one of your favorite moments at the tournament?
One of my favorite moments was being in home base with everyone else, so when you go to the event, there's a main room that everyone meets in, so throughout the day, if you weren't doing any event at that time, people would come in and out, and you got to see all your friends and ask them how they did and stuff, I thought it was really fun.
What do you usually do when you're waiting for the events end, you have to wait for awards, what do we usually do?
Well, we, I studied for some of my other events, and we hung out, and we kind of met up with all our friends, and walked around campus, and we played football and different sports and stuff outside.
Great. It's a fun time. And lastly, Brooke, what were your events?
I studied in forestry, dynamic climate, and rocks and minerals.
Rocks and minerals, what do you have to do for that?
Well, rocks and minerals, you're given a list of all different names of rocks, and you need to memorize like what they look like and different characteristics. So, we had these two big rock kits that we studied for the year, and we memorized what they looked like, and what different like streaks they had.
And what would you say was the most difficult part of the preparing all year?
What was really difficult was trying to memorize rocks that looked very similar. We did have a lot of different materials, so we could scratch them against to see like how hard it was, or what color it came out as.
Good. And what will you always remember about Science Olympiad?
I'll always remember that like the competition is just like a really, really great way to like see like all the other towns, and try to like get awards, and have fun.
Thank you. So, just a little taste of what this program is like, it is a fabulous program, I'm privileged to know a few doctors that work at Beth Israel, and believe it or not, two out of four of them that I know were in Science Olympiad in New Jersey. So, it's really neat to see that, that it may have pushed them into the medical field. I know that the graduating seniors was my first team, and you know, that big valedictorian debate, I have to say that most of them were Science Olympiad, and out of the eight valedictorians, I think maybe seven of them were Science Olympiad, and I'm so amazingly proud of all of them, and they're all going into science, and I hope that this year's team and teams to come, it somehow sparks their interest in the science and engineering field, and that will propel them into their future endeavors, so. Do you have any questions that you'd like to ask us?
Yeah, don't go, any questions on-
Mark, how many total participants?
So, we have 15 varsity, 15, and then from 15 to 30, what we call the JV team.
Are they all three grades, or?
So, they're all three grades, right, right. So, most of the varsity is made up of eighth grade, so this year we have 14 out of the 15 are eighth graders, so pulling them all up.
Hey, Mark, can you show us some of the things that you have on the table?
Sure. This is what we call our mousetrap vehicle, the person that made it, Jensen's not here tonight, so I won't put any of these guys through it.
This is really cool.
It's really cool, but it's broken, this, this, what is this thing called? I don't know, black vinyl thing.
Forty-five.
Forty-five.
Forty-five. Need a spindle on there.
That's right. The, this, the wheel has kind of broken a little bit. Basically, the mousetrap vehicle, they, they sometimes repeat the same event every year. Mousetrap, this was the second year, they made it a little interesting, they had to be able to manipulate it to stop at a specific distance, so they were told they had to at least propel the car from eight to 12 meters, and when they got to the event, they'd be told to stop it at eight, nine, 10, whatever. And so, they had a braking system on this by winding up the thread to a certain amount, and then, once the, once the potential energy within the mousetraps was released, changing to kinetic, it would start to pull on the string and therefore move the vehicle. So, depending on how much string there was, would depend on how far it would go, so that's what this little device is for. They used two, two gave more energy, last year they only used one, and last year it was the furthest one. So, it's really neat, this, I just, with Jen, I wish Jensen was here to explain, but they, they really did some neat, simple machine ratios, and effort, and potential energy equations, and so, I mean, they really got deep into figuring out the diameter of wheels and so forth, so fabulous device. Same with this, our, the two people that made this are at soccer practice tonight, unfortunately. Only, no, I mean, this year's, this year's one, Haley and Suzie. I know, I'm improvising.
That's on television.
This, this year's event was to make a boomer lever, which goes in this direction, this is a tower, and it's basically the same concept, just a different direction of energy. So, this was actually last year's tower, our boomer lever this year is there, they left it there. So, but they were the, part of the same crew that built that, they have to, again, hold up to something like 15,000 grams, so it's pretty amazing for them to figure out what they're going to use and so forth. And then again, the people that built this are not here, baseball practice, and this was the rotor, was there something else that was?
Helicopter.
Helicopter. And basically, it would wind up, there would be elastic in here, they wind it with a special winder, and then it just starts floating around, but the elastic is not there. You know, after the tournament, they literally take everything and throw it in the car, so. Wheels break, and then Noah can show you the xylophone that his partner and he had made, and go ahead, play us "Take Me Out To Ballgame." His instrument was a pipe instrument, he had built a pipe, kind of like Bloomingdale's Group, and that was his, and he left it there, too, so donated it to Assumption. And so, this was his partner, just give it a tune, just a little bit. Very good. So, they had two sheets of music they had to play, they had to play a given, which was all teams played, and then they, they had their own, which tune did you play? Twinkle, twinkle, happy birthday?
Yeah.
Twinkle, twinkle, little star, so, and they both had to be, they had to have a different scale, so it's pretty neat, that, the first time they ever incorporated music in science, more like engineering, so. And then, who's the crime buster? What was that?
It's basically like forensic science, when you solve a crime with like all different fibers, and things that would be a little bit hard.
Yes, and so what, why this, what's this whole thing?
Because you have to solve a crime at the competition, like it's like a mock crime, and you just have like lab codes, you get to bring like a double-sided sheet to look off of, and you just have a bunch of stuff that you have to get to test.
So, they give you a list of what they have to have, so they have their own little crime scene kit, and I think that's it. And then Brooke has her favorite book. She can't put it down. So, yeah.
So, I know we have the, we have the elementary school does a competition, and middle school, do we do something at the high school now? Didn't we have a teacher come in?
Yes.
Was it Caitlin?
Caitlin Corrigan.
Caitlin Corrigan came in, I think, a year, a year and a half ago?
Yes.
So, when they moved to the high school, there'll be something else if they want to participate, correct?
Exactly, right. The Science Olympiad in the high school is a little different, it's more individual than it's team. So, in the middle school, it's strictly team, and then in the high school, they are individuals, so they compete as individuals, so they basically would practice throughout the year, and then show up at the, at the tournament. But then, I think she had brought in two other science-related competition-type things, too, just in case they wanted to try something else.
Great. Mike?
So, Mr. Gorgani is, this is the first time I attended a competition, because I was busy the last couple of years, and he's got actually a team of parents that actually assist, and I believe Cliff has been one of the coaches on the team. The events are actually amazing, we have hundreds of kids and parents going from one event to another, witnessing some of this stuff, you know, from large auditoriums to gyms that, you know, and I've seen heartbreak like the Olympics, where an event, you know, one of the mousetrap cars just failed, and one of, one of the other kids, I mean, it was literally like the Olympic, it was very heartbreaking, so these kids take it seriously. In my naive way, I said, well, how are we doing on the individual events? And Mr. Gorgani quickly snapped back and said, it's not about the individual events, it's about the team score, which I was really impressed, actually. So, I was kidding there. Secondly, I would never play flag football with Mr. Gorgani, he's way too serious.
He's serious, right?
Way too serious.
That's why I'm always official QB.
You should see him coach hockey.
I know. I thought our students not only represented our school well at the events, but also wandering the campus, they took care of their environment around them, they took care of the room and didn't trash it, and they actually acted normal for the most part, playing flag football and being with the teacher and having fun and laughing and not being stressed out about all this.
That's great.
So, it was a great experience for me, I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
And then the last thing I want to say is Mr. Gorgani, I emailed him and I said, I would like to see if I can get you on the agenda to come and speak to us about the Science Olympiad, because I was so impressed, oh, for the school committee, and he said, well, the Science Olympiad is not about me, it's about the kids, so I want the kids to sing.
Well, that's great.
A great example of an awesome teacher in the schools.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
I just wondered what the students think about their own career trajectory, do you want to do science and engineering, what are sort of your aspirations, dreams, thoughts about that, having now done this wonderful Olympiad?
I don't want to answer, no.
I'm not trying to embarrass you, you don't have to answer.
Oh, I don't know. It's nothing that I would want to take into a career. I did maps, stars, maybe this thing.
There's always a need for a worldly gig egg dropper, I mean, honestly.
Professional worldly.
Right, exactly.
Otherwise, you go through dozens of eggs.
Right, you're just, the eggs are just, speaking of the money it's spent.
What you, what you will find is that every experience that you have, every one, from the egg dropper to the mousetrap car, to building the structure, every one of those little pieces of information gets tucked away back in here, and someday, you'll have something, not an egg dropper, but something that kind of uses that idea, or that that will help you solve another problem later. And that, that's the best part about this, is that there's, it isn't the thing you're doing right now, it's how those little pieces get woven into the fabric of your mind, so that you can use that later on.
Yeah, I mean, I think a couple of girls are definitely interested in science.
Yeah. Well, the science and technology aspect is awesome, but I think the fact that you get to work on presentation skills, you get to interact with other people that you normally wouldn't if it was just a regular class, or, you know, some of those kind of events, and those are things that last with you a lifetime, and to start learning that stuff in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade gives you a head start over everybody else. The other thing, however, Mr. Gorgani, and this is going to put some pressure on you, but once we have a new school here, I'm going to expect first place every year, so.
I know.
And also moving, I think, you know, they have these robotics contests and things that we really can't participate in now, because we don't have, I think, once we get into our new schools, that what we can do with science, and I think you will be sophomores, right, entering this sophomore year, that the opportunities that we're going to have, I think, are going to be- That the opportunities that we're going to have, I think, are going to be widely expanded.
We now do have a high school robotics team to look forward to.
Right.
So it's in its developmental stages, but they're doing great things.
Right.
Science Olympiad does have a robotics event, it rotates every four years, so, um, it'll be quite a little conflict, I think, when it happens, because I know they have something now. But maybe we can somehow come together and join forces to compete in it.
Great.
That string wind-up break is at least the third time that that's been used.
Oh yeah, exactly, exactly.
I remember two, two years that it was used.
That's right, that's right.
Very effectively.
I'm looking up there and I see the shirts and the science stuff, I think of the Big Bang Theory.
Just know that geology is actually a real science.
Yes. I do have one more question. I was intrigued, what did you do with, what was the forestry competition?
Uh, well, the forestry, you had, where you were given a list of different tree names, and you had to, you were given a field guide too, so you had to like memorize different trees, mark up books. And we really, we use a slideshow most of the time, so we went through pictures of the trees, and we had to learn like different diseases that affect them. So when you get to the competition, you take a test and all that.
Which one of you had a cure for tree pollen issues? But I guess that won't be coming in the, the near future, so. Well, great job. Any other questions? Thanks a lot.
Thank you very much.
And we'll see you next year.
Yes.
Not these four, maybe, but we'll see for others.
Won't be those four, they're all.
Right, the high school, yeah. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Don't forget the tro, the trophy.
Let's get the trophy.
Thanks Madison, get out where you can.
Thanks Madison. You know, that egg dropper thing, if you live on like a second floor, third floor, and you need to drop an egg down to a neighbor.
You never know.
Right.
You never can tell, like coming in and out.
Exactly.
That is kind of.
We really know the hell out of there, Ron.
I know, huh? Totally empty. Okay. So before we get back to our regular agenda, I wanted to address an issue. There's, it's gotten significant visibility over the last few days. There was a story in the Boston Globe on Thursday in the Globe North section. The North Reading Patch has a story today, and it relates to the ongoing issue related to the softball and baseball team fairness, et cetera. One of the things I wanted to do is, the Globe had a couple of what I think were mistakes. The Globe made it sound like we were building two new fields, and we were building two new baseball fields. There's only one new field on the campus, and there's our existing baseball field. There's one new field that we'll be constructing. And then the Globe also stated that the Parks and Rec Department hadn't been maintaining the little school complex as well as they had been maintaining the high school complex. And at our athletic subcommittee, we met with Marty Tilton, who's the head of the Parks and Rec Department, and he assured us, he had, he had schedules, hours, time that was spent on each field. And they, they were given, by the Parks and Rec Department, each field was given equal time in terms of maintenance. There were just a couple other things. You know, this rumor is starting to go around the town that there's some kind of conspiracy here, that this, this was always meant to be a baseball field, and we just put it there for a softball field to win over people, so they'd approve the school project, and a bunch of other things I've heard today. And, and, you know, none of that's correct. And I just, again, want to go over the facts. It was July of last year, we were asked to make a recommendation on this field. And before we did that, I asked the superintendent to have the principal of the high school, the athletic director at the high school, and softball and baseball coach, and we also had Parks and Rec involved, to make a recommendation to us. And it was unanimous that this should be a baseball field. And I read the materials again tonight before I came to the meeting. And there was a letter from Dave Johnson, the athletic director, and in that letter, even the softball coach said he loves the little school complex. It's the best thing that's happened to the program. They've developed a great relationship with the youth softball league. I noticed in the Globe that the softball coach may be changing his mind and may have a different opinion now. And that's one of the reasons why at some point I'm going to ask that we, that the school committee reconsider the recommendation that it made. In the meantime, we are addressing as many of the issues as we can that were brought to our attention over the past several months by North Reading Citizens for Equality. We've addressed the bathroom issue over there. We, uh, the superintendent has worked with the principal of the little school to help to improve the condition of the field. And we've addressed, we're trying to address the issues that we can. We've added a second porta potty over there for fan usage. We've done basically all that we can at this point to address the issue, because clearly there isn't another spot on campus for a field. So I just wanted to address that, and as I said, um, we have time to, to deal with this issue. I'm going to ask, um, at the next SSBC meeting, to get some kind of date as to when is the drop dead in terms of when changes can be made in the plan. I know that there are other people in the community who are searching for other areas to put a baseball field in, because that's one of the issues. Uh, the town will be down to two baseball fields? Two full baseball fields, correct?
That's correct.
And I believe we will have seven softball fields in town. And for, for the town usage and for the high school usage, that, that creates difficulty. So, those are the issues we face. If any of my colleagues want to address this, I know it's been, I did want to address it because it, it had made such a big splash in the media over the, over the past, past week. So if anybody wants.
Just briefly, Mel.
Okay.
I consider this, you called, talked about an issue, I think it's a fabricated issue. It's something that's been created by a small group of people, and, and they've gotten some mileage out of it. My concern, and I know the committee's concern, and certainly the athletic subcommittee's concern is the quality of the facilities. And again, having experienced softball fields all over eastern Massachusetts, particularly in the Cape Ann League and communities contiguous to us, we have a very, very good facility. I mean, I would rank it right up there with some of the best in the area. And, and that's, I, I talked to Marty Tilton tonight, as a matter of fact, before we came over here. And I went over twice during vacation week to look at the field just before games. And it was in absolutely perfect condition. I mean, I, I've never seen the field look so good. The, uh, the infield looked like Fenway Park. So again, uh, my position on this hasn't changed. We have an excellent facility there. Uh, I think the majority of the people that know what they're talking about recommended that, that remain in the softball facility. And I'm sure, I'm sure the discussion on it down the road, but I thought that was a very biased article that was trying to make a point, kind of ignored a lot of the, uh, the facts, so.
Anyone else? Cliff, Karen, Michael?
The problem with doing so well in things is that there's always somebody out there to try to hit you, try to knock you down.
Well, so I, you know, as, as Jerry said, this will be under discussion for some time. There will be a drop dead date as to when a final decision has to be made. I, I do want to say that, um, after these conspiracy charges started flying around today, I pulled up the diagram, the drawing that I have of the field on, um, it was done May 2012. It doesn't say baseball, it doesn't say softball, it says field. It shows ninety-foot base paths. Those are baseball base paths. This was, this was, um, Jerry, who's the company that's doing the landscaping? And I believe it was from them, the, the drawing of these fields, the company that.
Oh, the landscaping for the, uh, building project?
Building project, yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure, Mel, it escapes me, but.
And, so it showed a baseball diamond, but then it showed really small dimensions to, to the outfield for a baseball field. So it, so it sent a mixed message. My guess is they did that intentionally, because we hadn't decided yet what the field was going to be. So they showed us a baseball infield and a softball depth outfield.
Yeah, I think that the, the plan shows a short outfield because of the limits.
Space allowed.
Right.
We just don't have that much property there.
Right.
So it's a, uh, a, a shorter outfield than it ordinarily have for a baseball field. The, the decision point on that is quite a ways down the road.
Right, cause that's the last thing on the project, right?
Because the difference in cost of building a baseball field versus a softball field is relatively insignificant.
Right.
And the, the space is, is there. And it's not going to be built until sometime after the high school is raised. So, uh, that's in.
2015.
2015.
Correct.
So until they, until they actually lay out the lines on the ground, that's the, that's the final decision point.
And one last thing I wanted to make clear, we do continue to work with the town, with residents. We had the North Reading Citizens for Equality come to our meeting and make a presentation. We had two members.
Both of them.
At our, right, and, and at our most recent, um, athletic subcommittee, we had one of the founders of the group and another gentleman who was a member of the group. So we've kept, um, open communications with them, and we will continue to work with them. So I just wanted to put that to rest for tonight. Anybody else? Thank you. Okay, next, uh, continued business. We have an update on the school building project, other than it's going really fast?
It's moving very fast. We have not had a, a secondary school building committee meeting since the last school committee meeting. But another secondary school building committee meeting has been scheduled since the last meeting. So we have a meeting Wednesday, May first, 2013, beginning at 5:30 PM in the high school modular cafeteria. So that will be the next secondary school building committee meeting, and it's a Wednesday and not a Tuesday.
The only other thing too, report that they finished the steel on building A today. Moved the crane, and now we're starting the erecting of steel on building C, which is kind of the building closest to the fence as you come into the middle school there. So that, that's a sign of progress right there.
Media center.
Right.
Administrative offices in Main Street and the main entrance to the high school.
And you'll see that steel going up tomorrow, cause they've already set it out there and started to, to move it.
It's fascinating, they've actually gained four days or so in the construction so far.
I don't know. We are currently at zero float, which is finishing exactly on time.
And it is exciting, you know, when you look at it close, it doesn't look as cool as it looks when you're going on, driving on Route 62, and you look up on the hill and you see it. It just looks, um, it looks great, yeah.
The thing that you will notice most is when the steel starts going up on, on, on B and D, which are the auditorium.
And the gym.
And the gym. And when you're looking up now, you see the high school. But to the right of the high school, the building keeps on going for those, uh, those other two sections. And they're huge.
Great. I just want to congratulate our friends in Wilmington. They had their groundbreaking, their long-delay groundbreaking last week for their high school project. They had already begun demolition of some of the older buildings that they're doing away with, and, um, they're full speed ahead now with construction. They had the groundbreaking last week.
And all, most building projects, there's some inconvenience for staff, faculty, students, parents, et cetera. And Wilmington, they literally knocked down the gymnasium.
Right.
So it's, it's hard when you're trying to build on a controlled site and, and, and keep an active campus going while you're doing it. So everyone faces challenges.
We, we're faced with about ten days of, uh, of inconvenience for our neighbors. Because the placement of the slabs on these, these buildings are very long days, starting at five or six in the morning, ending up after midnight the same day.
After the one continuous pour on each floor.
Do they pour, that's what they do?
One continuous pour to do the entire floor, and it's, there's some work involved in doing it.
When you look at the size of that, look at the size of the floor, as you can.
And concrete, when it's, when it's being placed, you first put it in place, and you gotta kind of strike it off, and then you have to let it sit for a while before you can stop to do the finishing of it. And that's a long process, because it isn't all placed all at the same time. And the finishing process has to stage through, and that's why it takes so long.
If you look carefully, you can see them spreading mesh up there for the concrete. And that mesh has to be, I guess, moved or balanced when they pour the concrete. It's not just sitting on the floor, so it's a really complex process.
Well, it's been, it's just been moving ahead full speed almost since construction began. And they got through the snowstorms, and there really hasn't been a hiccup in construction. And, um, you know, the crews are doing a great job, and from what I've seen, the professionals we have managing the job are, are right on top of things.
Keep your fingers crossed.
Exactly, exactly.
They also, uh, spray seeded the back of the piles, the working piles, to make sure that we don't end up by having a dust storm back there.
Yeah, they hydro seeded it on Thursday.
So that the dust doesn't blow around, right?
Yeah, it's temporary.
Right. Great, okay. Next, we have, um, take a vote tonight on our fiscal year 2014 budget, which will be Mr. Nelson's last budget.
I, I, I've heard that before. Let's just see.
And I do want to say something before you, you know, I don't want to, Carl, you weren't, you, obviously you weren't here when we interviewed, the candidates replaced you. But after each candidate, Jerry would say, I'm still voting for Carl. And we had to keep saying, he's not coming back, Jerry, this is the second time, he's not coming back. So, um, but.
He didn't actually vote for you, I feel bad.
I know. But we, uh, Carl, we, it's just been, I know you're here for a few more months, but it's been great putting budgets together with you for, for a number of years. I think Jerry's been here almost the entire time, um, you've been here. So, uh, um, we go out with a flourish, with a balanced budget. Carl?
Thank you. Well, you know, it's really a collective process, so I'm really the point person, but there are a lot of people that really contribute to this. Thank you, thank you for your kind words. So as you said, this is a benchmark night. This is the night where the school committee hopefully supports the, uh, the budget that we've worked on as a group. And, uh, should they take a positive vote, it gets transmitted to the town administrator, and then we translate that into a warrant that gets reviewed and discussed on June 3rd at town meeting. So what I thought it would be useful to do here is not go through the budget line by line, but to, uh, look at, a different look at it. If you have in your packet a spreadsheet that has, uh, kind of lime green colors and, uh, blue rows, and I don't think we've looked at the budget from this kind of perspective before, but I think it's an interesting, it's almost a third dimension.
Yeah, I really like this.
Oh, good, because.
It's awesome.
Although the school committee tonight is, is voting a budget from the general fund, which of course is the number that the town meeting will, uh, review, there are other funds that are used in the formulation of the budget. And it's, I think, sometimes useful to see what the total budget is minus those funds that are contributed by fees and grants and revolving funds. So that's what this document tries to do. So if you look at the top section, um, you see a line that's called gross salary budget. And that, what that's showing you is that the total salary that is required to operate FY14 is actually twenty-two million, two-hundred-and-fifty-six-thousand, three-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars. But what we do is we apply funds from other areas to reduce the total amount, reaching what's in that blue row that says salary budget appropriation. And as you can see, the actual town meeting figure for salary is twenty-one million, five-hundred-and-three-thousand, three-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand, which is about three-quarters of a million dollars less than the gross figure. So what we've done is we've parceled together eight different other, uh, slices of funds to, uh, provide funding for our personnel costs. I won't go through all eight of them, but I, I just note that the, the highest one is number seven in that list. You can see we generate two-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand dollars from full-day kindergarten tuitions to help support the costs of teachers. We also, in that same fund, generate fifty thousand dollars to support the cost of general paraprofessionals who provide support to those kindergarten classrooms. So this is just giving you a sense, uh, for what the total costs are minus, uh, the, uh, kind of entrepreneurial approach we take to building the budget. And then as you progress down the page, you see another, uh, section in the middle with that kind of greenish color. And again, the gross expense budget is five million, nine-hundred-and-sixteen thousand. That's the total expenses. And then we identify in, uh, A through G, um, a series of, uh, dollars that we're able to extract from, from various activities to reduce the total cost. And once again, the largest number in here is B, circuit breaker. Those are funds, of course, allocated from the state based on our special ed population. So we're going to be applying seven hundred thousand of those dollars to this budget. We had saved some up from last year, cause if you look at the right-hand column, we only used four-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand last year. So once again, we take money from revolving accounts that are fee-based, such as athletic. We take funds from, uh, D, facility revolving. Those are funds that we generate from gym use. We take funds, uh, shown in row E, from families who are supporting, uh, bus travel, those who are not in the free territory, so to speak. are not in the free territory, so to speak, and we take them from a variety of sources. This is really a balancing act, and we're fortunate that we have these fees and grants to do it. So once we do that, we, on the expense side, as you can see, we're generating about a million, almost a million eight, $1,795,000, to reduce that gross figure. So it all, it all ends up with a total appropriation request of, and this is the amount the school committee will consider tonight, of $25,624,489, which is only a 1.8% increase over the present year. And then lastly, on this sheet, I thought it would be helpful to, in the gray shaded area, to enumerate the changes we made from the preliminary budget. The school committee was given the preliminary budget in that notebook in February, and the budget you see in front of you is, is pretty much identical to that with the exceptions of what we've listed here. So we've made reductions from that preliminary budget as part of the way we balanced the budget. We had to make some very difficult choices, and I, I, I think it's probably appropriate to go through those so the public is aware of what we did.
Sure.
Okay.
Sure. So as you know, we have put forward a five-year plan that's based on three major strategies of continuous improvement. They have to do with teaching and learning, integrating technology, and student services. And so for FY14, we had put forward four key initiatives to fund in the FY14 budget, but unfortunately, at this time, we're not able to move them forward. We had put forward a 1.0 Assistant Director of Digital Learning for a total of $88,512, a 1.0 Digital Learning Specialist for a total of $48,000, the adoption of No Atom in Grade 5 for a total of $24,983, and professional development for the implementation of No Atom, and our literacy program called Foundations for a total of $13,900. And in addition to those four pieces of each of the initiatives that fall under the three major strategies, we had also suggested hiring a .2 High School Mandarin teacher, a 1.0 High School Humanities teacher, and a .5 Middle School Health teacher for a grand total of $261,905 for all of the positions that had been just identified. So again, we have a vision to move the school district forward under NRPS 2016. It doesn't mean that we're not going to continue to move forward, it's just going to take us a little longer to achieve our goals. Yes?
I thought you were going to work on trying to find appropriation for the No Atom materials, I'm wondering if you're going to continue to do that?
We're continuing to try to identify funds that were not already committed to the offsets that Carl just went through, but exceed those, and if we're able to put together some amounts of money, we would move forward some of these particular items, one being the Assistant Director of Digital Learning, and two being the No Atom materials for Grade 5. Those are our two top priorities.
Is that a guarantee, or...
That's not a guarantee, not at this particular time. We're still taking a look at what funds have been identified as encumbered for the FY13 budget, what funds will not be expended, and how much of those funds exceed what's already been committed as carry-forward already.
We've also put a spending freeze on, correct, Carl, in hopes of being able to have some additional funds to carry over next... I know at this time of year, it's late in the air, and most of the money in the budget has been spent already, but I think the goal is to try to find something additional that we can carry over next year.
That's correct.
You know what's a shame is the NRPS 2016 that's been removed out of this budget represents .01% of the entire budget.
No.
That's a really awful reality.
Yeah, it was a very modest request by the superintendent, it's a shame that we couldn't do it.
It really is. I'm surprised.
Any questions or comments?
I just had one quick question, Carl. The $700,000 on the circuit breaker, is that, is that money considered in the overall pot when we're looking to get our budget with the selectmen, is that, or is that outside of that consideration? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think what happened this year, as you remember, we had a big budget gap about a month ago.
Yeah.
And we had to make up over $300,000. So there was a two-pronged attempt there. There was one, a review of the budget to see where could we cut back, and unfortunately, one of the outcomes of that discussion were the reductions that superintendent just listed. At the same time, we were looking at where can we find additional money as offsets, because remember, you can reduce your budget both ways, you can cut expenses, or you can bring more third-party money into the picture to reduce your gross. So to answer your question more specifically, during that process in March, we started to get more encouraged about how much more circuit breaker we were going to get next year. So what we did was we increased the circuit breaker offset. Originally, the circuit breaker offset was close to a half, about $200,000 less. It really was. So I'm not sure if I answered...
But the money comes directly to us, Jerry, this does not go through the town.
I know it comes directly to us, and then most of these other revenues that we're showing here, I mean, this, I was doing the calculations, I don't know if I'm right or not, but there's about $2,548,000 worth of additional funds not part of the...
But this is treated differently than Chapter 70, which, this is, right?
Yes, okay, that's what I was looking for, Mel, this comes directly to us, it's not considered part of the big overall part.
Exactly. We don't literally get a check, but we get an EFT transfer.
Allocation.
Yes, and it's, it's directed at the school department, and it's not part of the bigger picture.
Okay, good, that's, thanks, that's all I wanted to know.
All of these, you could say the same thing about all of these.
All of these, yeah.
Any else? Jerry mentioned that number. Our budget actually is almost $28.2 million if you, if you add that in.
$28,172,489.
Correct.
That's total.
The other thing that's interesting here is the fees and tuitions, which come out of the pockets of residents of North Reading, whose children attend North Reading schools, are $1,090,000. And those are various fees, some are much higher than others, full-day kindergarten, preschool, et cetera. But if you take our 2,650 students, that comes out to about $475 additional per student on average that parents are footing the bill. Now, some parents don't pay anything because their kids don't participate in athletics, they don't do extracurricular, they may pay to have them ride the bus, some parents, some families are paying well over $1,000. It's not fair, it's patently unfair, and it's been going on in our district and many other districts for way too long. And once this trend started of imposing fees, we didn't start it here in North Reading, but we jumped on the bus, oh no, if we jumped on the bus, we'd have to pay, we jumped on the bandwagon, and now you can't get rid of them. I mean, we are, I think, to a person here in this committee, I know Karen spoke about it recently, it's a travesty that we have these fees, and I think to a person, we'd like to get rid of them, but where are we going to find $1,090,000? I'd like to see free full-day kindergarten for every kid in this district. We should have it, and, and we can't. So that's just really frustrating. The other thing is, the things we've had to cut, as Michael said, it just adds to the frustration, even something as small as $10,000 for something that I know John Bernard was really excited about, and we were excited about bringing Mandarin, another foreign language, to the high school, just one section. You know, maybe John can find a way to, you know, find some money in his budget, but, you know, just, it's just frustrating.
We not only voted that course, but we also voted the funding for that course.
Right.
And we're having to back off from that.
So, any other comments? Do you have anything else, Kathy, or...
I can, I'm ready to make a recommendation.
Okay.
So it is my recommendation that the school committee approve the amount of $25,624,489 as the FY14 school district budget appropriation request.
Do you have a motion?
Yes, I'll move that.
Second.
Motion by Cliff, second by Karen. Any further discussion? This will be the number that'll appear on the town warrant, correct? Great. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thanks, Carl and Kathy, and your staff for all the work that went into this. I also want to thank the town administrator and the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee for all participating in this process, and those, our regular finance planning team meetings are great to help get this stuff done. So, Carl, what are you going to do next year when we're doing the budget? You're going to come and watch, or...
You know, I'm busy that night.
Watch on TV? Oh, no. You can watch it on TV in Reading, right?
If you have, you need Verizon.
Oh, okay.
I have Comcast.
Oh, okay.
If you have Verizon, you can watch North Reading in seven or eight surrounding communities, actually.
Wow. We actually heard that the other night, that one of the candidates from Stonemont watched us, the candidate, the eventual candidate we offered the position to, watched us in Reading. We were just shaking our heads, you're watching us? Where we are, we have huge ratings. Huge ratings. Thank you, Carl.
That tripled our rating.
Yes.
For two weeks.
From one to three. Okay, next, school committee self-evaluation. I've, I've received a couple of forms online, if anybody...
I sent you mine. Pardon me, I missed the point of the meeting, sorry.
Okay, so I have, and I have them all.
I gave us an A.
Of course you did. So what we're...
That wasn't one of the reading criteria.
I just put A.
So what we are going to do is, I believe, not next meeting, but the meeting after, I will come back, I'll take all the results, I'll collate them and review them, and I'll come back with a, with a, a grid of results, and...
On behalf of the rest of the committee, I'd like to thank you very much and advance for that.
I enjoy it.
It's equally as fun as goal setting.
It is, it is.
I don't know if it's that much fun.
I like, I enjoy, Jerry has very, very nice, you wouldn't expect it, very nice printing, block, block printing, not handwriting, but block printing. It's very nice, Jerry. So I guess that's all we need to do on that, right? I'm just gonna, I got the results and...
We have an evaluation subcommittee on May 10th, so we'll be sitting together to take a look at the compiled results that you bring to that meeting.
Okay. All right. Okay, next, we have the Olympiad presentation. Next, this is, this is, this has become one of our really favorite segments of the meeting, which is the policy review show here with Cliff and Michael. Is this the final section of review?
You betcha. I couldn't have put in any better.
It's, I'm sure it's fascinating reading.
It is.
For the both of you.
It's so much fun to do, too. You know, you learn quite a bit.
It is interesting, and you always say, how, why is this a policy in the policy manual, or...
I've asked that several times.
Yeah, don't you look through and say, what does this have to do with education, or...
You've been listening to Michael.
No, no, I haven't.
I can tell you, you know, from experience, that almost every time there's a policy or a procedure for something, it's because something in the past has come up that required some type of a definition of...
And then you never use it again.
Yep, but it's hap, that's why it's there.
Right.
And there's a lot of them.
So you want to take the lead, or Michael?
Well, Michael, you want to do this?
Go ahead.
Cliff's good at it, he's, yeah, he's good at presenting.
Section JAA, equal educational opportunities. And in that, we are changing certified and non-certified at the end of the first paragraph to faculty, which is consistent with our current situation.
And all faculty has to be certified anyway, right? We can't have non-certified faculty anymore.
Well, staff represents non-certified, so you say faculty, and that represents the professional, licensed staff.
Okay.
And in the, yeah, in the third paragraph, we're changing from Chapter 622 to Chapter 76, Section 5 of Mass General Laws. And we're doing a revised first reading until 29.
So can I have a motion?
Move to approve a first reading, policy JAA.
Second that.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Okay, next, school admissions.
And the next one is policy JBC, and we are modifying that to insert after the words "on account of race, color, sex," including gender identity, eliminating "or" between religion and national origin, and then adding "or sexual orientation," which is consistent with current general law.
Motion to approve?
Move to approve a first reading, policy JBC.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? What'd you say?
No, I'm going to...
Oh, no? Okay. 4-1?
Is, where'd I go here?
JBCA-R, I think.
Ah, yes.
School admission residency.
Yes, and on the second page, we're eliminating in Section 3, in the second paragraph, we're eliminating the words "may use the assistance of the school department's attendance officer."
Do we even have one of those?
No.
That's why we're eliminating it.
So you couldn't really, you couldn't really use the assistance of that officer?
That's correct.
You see, this is why this is so much fun.
Yes, because you get to find things like that.
Oh, because you find little things like that.
Anything else in this one, or is that the only thing?
No, that's it.
Okay, so I'll have a motion...
Move to approve a first reading, policy JBCA-R.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
And policy JBCA, assignment of students to schools. And at the end of Item 4, which says the superintendent finds the change to be in the best interest of, in the old system, system, we're changing the word "system" to "district", which is appropriate.
Motion to approve, policy JBCA, first reading, assignment of students to schools.
Second.
Keep in mind, this was not reviewed for 29 years.
Really?
Oh, yeah, 1984.
I think Jerry was still on the school committee. Did he write this policy?
Do we have a motion in a second on that?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
The next one is Section JBD, which is Student Dismissal Procautions. And under Item 2, we're changing that to Children of Estranged Parents Can Be, and the word "can" is being added.
The word was missing, huh?
Released only on the request of the parent whom the court calls directly responsible for the child who isn't the parent, is the parent or guardian registered on the school record.
Have a motion to accept first reading of revised policy JBD?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. JGC, how do they get these letters, JGCD-E?
It has to do with the MASC...
Oh, they have like a alphabet soup?
Soup that they use to define the policies. And we try to be consistent with that for multitude of reasons. So under JGCD-E, we are changing the names of the people here for the school nurse in two cases.
All right.
To Ms. Lois Bison in the case of the hood school, and Ms. Marielle Pacillo in the case of the little school.
This seems a little, I, I, you know, obviously you have to change the policy every time you change the nurse, but I guess there's no harm in going on.
No.
Is that a motion?
You have a motion?
I move to approve a first reading, policy JGDCFG, no, I'm sorry, JGCD-E.
Can I have a second?
We're going to do a little dance, I was going to say.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. GGFA?
GGFA, which is Maintenance and Control of Chemicals Used in Science Instruction, and we're changing the, the regulatory body from Massachusetts Department of Environmental Quality Engineering to the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. They changed the name.
I like this policy because it orders that the chemicals are stored in alphabetical order. I think that's one of my favorite policies that I've seen in the entire policy manual, because if they're not stored in alphabetical order, you can never find them, right?
Right.
Okay, motion to approve the revised first reading, GGFA.
So moved, second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
The next is policy JGB. The next is policy JGB. And we are deleting that policy because we don't have industrial arts shops.
Anytime we can delete a policy, that's a good thing, I'm gonna move to delete JGB.
Second.
Second by Michael, motion by Jerry, further discussion, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Next is JGG, bus transportation. And we're changing the legal reference to Mass General Law, chapter 71, section 7A.
Motion to approve first reading revised JGG?
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. The next one looks interesting because we've deleted a whole lot here, so...
We...
JHCD-R.
JHCD-R, hazing regulations. We're eliminating the first 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 paragraphs. And we start prohibition of hazing. To haze means to initiate by exacting humiliating performances from or playing rough practical jokes upon. Therefore, any initiation that interferes in any way with the proper functioning of a school program is considered hazing, and is forbidden by the North Redding School Committee. Each student will be notified in a class meeting that the practice of hazing is prohibited and will be asked to sign a statement of agreement. Any member of a student organization involved in hazing will be suspended from the school organization. The length of the suspension and the determination of whether there will be additional school discipline will be decided upon by the principal. Chapter 269 of Mass General Laws, MGL, an act prohibiting the practice of hazing, be it enacted by the Senate and House of Representatives in the General Court assembled and by the authority of same as follows. Chapter 269, section 17, hazing organizing or participating, hazing defined. Whoever is a principal organizer or participant in a crime of hazing is defined herein shall be punished by a fine of not more than $3,000, or by imprisonment in a house of correction for not more than one year, hundred...
There's something wrong there.
Something's wrong.
Something's missing. It says for not more than one year, 100 days. That's a long time. One year, 100 days. Is it one year or 100 days?
No. No.
Is it 100 days?
Not more than one year. I'm not sure, I've never seen that title.
A question for us. Shall we...
It looks to me, Mel, that that's...
Can I say, though, that I would, I'm concerned with the initial wording in this, and I don't think we're gonna...
I think...
...take a vote on this tonight.
Okay, let me just mention where this came from. You've already voted this. This came right from the high school handbook. You had revised this language previously. And so what we're doing is we're updating the policy that had already been written, revised.
What's that first sentence mean, though?
I don't understand the first sentence. I don't understand it.
The first sentence makes sense to haze means to initiate by exacting humiliating performances from or playing rough practical jokes upon.
I don't understand, I don't understand it.
And then they give the legal definition of the 269-17.
I'm wondering if we even need that.
In the, in the normal case, we don't publish the Mass General Law. And if this is, in fact, exact copy of Mass General Law...
But that first part?
Not the first paragraph.
The first part isn't, the first two paragraphs.
First paragraph.
Because I don't know what exacting humiliating performances means. I don't... It's by humiliating someone is what we want to say, not exacting humiliating performances. I think this is...
I suggest that we hold this for hold.
That other misprint is, it looks to me like it's gonna be the alternative fine, the fine as an alternative to the prison sentence. So I'm not sure.
It might be $100.
Well, it's gonna be more than that, probably, but...
Paul is going to get a high school handbook, so we can come back to this.
I just, I don't, I feel the same way, I don't like that first paragraph at all.
So let's skip over for now.
Let's skip and hold.
To a JHCR. Oh, God, do we...
We don't have to read it aloud.
No.
Except for four.
What are we changing on this?
Uh, this is a minor item on JHCE-R, and under number four, that we're saying disposable gloves should be worn, and disinfectant or bleach.
Okay.
That's a minor addition, but an important one.
Okay, move to approve a first reading, policy JHCE-R, both pages.
Second.
Second by Karen. You two under the buzzer. Further discussion, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous.
Next policy is JHF, which used to be child abuse reporting, and it's, it used to be child abuse, and now it's reporting suspected child abuse or neglect. And we're deleting the North Redding School Committee Director Superintendent Schools or his, or his designee to implement the general laws of Commonwealth regulations of the Department of Education as they relate to child abuse and neglect. And we're replacing that with North Redding Public Schools Policy Reflects the Content of Chapter 119, Section 51A of the Mass General Laws amended by Chapter 1076 of 1973. The purpose of the law is to protect children and prevent further neglect or abuse. North Redding Public Schools personnel are required to report abuse or neglect cases if in their professional capacity they have reasonable cause to believe that a child under the age of 18 years is suffering physical or emotional injury resulting from abuse inflicted upon him/her, including sexual abuse from neglect, including malnutrition, Mass General Laws, Chapter 119, Section 51A. All employees in North Redding Schools are mandated reporters under this policy. Responsible action by employees can be achieved through recognition and understanding of potential incidents of abuse, knowing and following established reporting procedures and participating in available child abuse and neglect information training programs. Legal references, Mass General Law, Chapter 119, Section 51A.
So do these two paragraphs replace just that one sentence that we used to have? Was that one sentence, the whole policy that was...
Correct.
Yeah.
The only question I'd have is that, is chapter 1076 of 1973 the most recent amendment to that? That's what that's indicating. So I just didn't know if there was a more recent amendment from 1973. I'm not sure where that came from.
I don't think there's anything.
Not to my knowledge, I can double check again.
I'm just curious, that's, it seems like a long time ago, and that chapter 51A has had some life to it, so...
The mandatory reporter rule's been in existence from sometime biblical times, I think.
All right. Just seemed like a long time ago.
So I only have two questions. One, does this, I'm assuming the law doesn't pertain to non-employees of volunteers? Personnel just seems like a weird word. So we say employees in the second paragraph, and it says personnel in the third line of this, the replacement paragraph?
That is a good question. The employees issue, do volunteers, are they...
They are not employees. They're not mandated reporters.
They're not?
No, but we'd expect them to say something to an administrator, but...
We should, we need to say...
We are mandated reporters as employees.
So this is reporting, so we're saying it's mandated, but then we can put a section that says, we strongly encourage volunteers or non-paid whatever to vote, I mean, I just, suggestion. And then the other question I have is, this says children under the age of 18, that just seems wrong to me.
It is, because we have kids through 22.
Because we're required to provide, you know...
Yeah, but that may be statutory.
Okay, so I just think that maybe that's been updated based, so I don't know, it just stuck.
That is an interesting question, since we have students through the age of 22, correct?
Yes, we do, at the high school.
So can we check, yeah, sorry.
Check this out.
What would you like checked?
Well, the 18-year-old thing, that 1973 thing, and I think Karen's right, that we need to reference, we have so many volunteers in the school system, that we should cover them somehow in this.
We can encourage that. Well, the thing is, they're not mandated reporters.
No, no, but can't we...
They're not mandated reporters.
This is a policy setting standard, so what we're, we have policies where we say, we strongly encourage, and we have an open door policy of whatever.
I think, I understand, Karen, but when you step outside the four corners of the statute here, you're potentially creating situations that we haven't anticipated.
We can get litigated.
Yeah, I mean, you're gonna start making it a response, suggesting people start...
Well, because if we suggest, and then a volunteer sees something and doesn't report it, then they say they ignored your policy.
Or they reported to the wrong place, or, you know, I mean, it's just, if you're mandated to report it by statute, I'm not sure we should go outside of that in particular.
Well, I'm just saying that this, even in this law, personnel...
Right, it says personnel, it does not, right.
Personnel, I don't know what that means, so I would want to be very, I would want to be very clear, this pertains only to employees, if that is the case, but...
Personnel has a different connotation than employees.
Our handbook probably could say something a little more strong.
Don't you think personnel has a different connotation than employees?
Again, you may want to go right back to the statute to see who they consider, who they define as mandated reporters under section 51A.
I don't know the answer to it, so...
So I like to, I like to review those things. Karen's right, I think these...
We can change personnel to employees. I think if that is clearer in the committee's eyes, I think that there's no issue with changing personnel to employees. But I will check into those two other issues that you raised.
Okay, so...
The statute does list specific individuals who fall under...
As mandated reporters.
As mandated reporters.
Okay, so we'll pass on that one for right now. JHFBR.
This is late night and overnight student travel. And we're, we're making a typo connect correction in the, at the end of scheduling item 2, where it said, it was a mistake in the word considered, before structured learning time. And then on the trip itineraries, change again another typo from drives to drivers. And on the fundraising, in item 1, at the end, school activates, change to activities. And change fundraising, fundraising should be consistent with policy DFO.
Any questions on this, JHFBR? Now, can I have a motion to approve first reading revised JFHB, JHFB-R?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Cliff, second by Karen. Further discussion, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous.
Section JIA, centralized kindergarten policy. We're eliminating the section.
So what did this used to say? Without, that we had one kindergarten building and everybody went there?
Yes.
And that's what we had in 94, huh? Again, this is 19, 19 years ago, and we no longer have centralized kindergarten. Another policy gone, Jerry.
Move to delete.
Second.
Policy J, I'm not finished yet. JIA.
Fine, I'm not second. Second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. J, policy JIB, JIBB.
JIBB, Student Activity, Student Advisory Committee. And we're deleting the last part of the third paragraph, which describes the members of the counts of the Student Advisory Committee, and in, and changing that to, members of the Student Advisory Committee shall be ex officio, non-voting members of the school committee without the right to attend executive sessions at the beginning of the school year. A calendar of attendance identifying which member will attend each school committee meeting will be developed and distributed. Members of the Student Advisory Committee shall be subject to all school committee rules and regulations.
Sounds good to me.
Hope to approve, policy JIBB, Student Advisory Committee, first reading.
Come a second?
Second.
Further discussion, hearing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous, JIB-R.
Student Advisory Committee Procedures, the, under election, the second bulleted item is being deleted. And under the chairperson, chairperson and the bullets under that are being deleted.
Just out of curiosity, is there another process by which students make them know that they want to be a student advisor?
It's the way that it's done now, it's done through a ballot, they submit their names to the principal, and their names go onto a ballot, so there's no collecting of signatures.
Well, shouldn't that be in there, though?
So that should not replace the current procedure?
Shouldn't that say students who are, who are interested in serving should submit their name to the principal?
It seems to leave a void as to how you're supposed to, and this is a procedure, not a policy, too.
Right, it is a procedure.
Proceedurally, they should have the format by which a student makes himself a candidate.
It should say students who are strong for Student Advisory Committee should submit their name to the principal...
Whatever it is, whatever the process is.
By whatever date or something.
Why don't we make this more timeless and just say that the principal sets the procedure?
Say that, too.
But there should be some procedure.
That's a good idea.
That's a good idea. Let's go with that. Everybody okay with that? Principal sets the procedure?
Sounds like...
Mike, all right? Okay.
I'm okay with that, I guess.
All right. And then, so the chairperson, is that basically you, Kathy, that serves in that role now?
Well, there is no chairperson, because what's happened, and I'm not sure when, each one of those students take a chance to sit on the school committee as opposed to just the chair.
Actually, that, we used to just have one person, right? Didn't we, for, or has it always been rotating?
I don't remember that, no. I always thought there was more than one.
If you don't remember it, then we didn't, so...
Well, that, if I don't remember, it just means I don't remember.
Okay, that makes sense, then, because, so then the chairperson was the only person who came to the...
Right, that, that was approved in 1999, so that's when...
Okay. So can we have a motion to approve first reading with Karen's, as amended, with Karen's suggestion that, what was it, the principal...
Shall determine.
Shall determine the procedure of nomination.
Okay. So, have a motion?
I move, as amended.
No, second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. So we'll have second readings last week, plus the first readings of those other, there were two that we delayed on, right?
Did we have any further information on those, or...
Well, I have the handbook now.
Okay.
And the language is exactly the same. To haze means to initiate by exacting humiliating performances from or playing rough practical jokes upon.
Yeah, that, that needs to be changed next year. Obviously, I didn't read that close enough, because that, that just doesn't make any sense.
Does it make sense to you, Kathy? What is it saying? I'm not, I'm not sure. It's just, it does not a grammatic, almost grammatically correct sentence.
It's not neat, but it gets...
I'm not even sure what it's saying.
I understand what it says, but you're right, it's not grammatical.
It should just say something like, it's humiliating someone.
I mean, to me, the safe thing would be to take the definition right out of chapter 2, whatever it is there, and...
Well, you could just take the prohibition of hazing, oh, that's a prelude to the actual MGL.
Right.
So by eliminating that...
Or you could say hazing, hazing as defined in chapters, whatever it is, section is, is prohibited, and then go into the next...
It's relatively rare that we would simply...
Right, go statute.
Reiterate the statute.
But you could have a preamble, but it should be very simple and basically leave you the...
Well, the preamble, we had...
Okay, well, we'll work on that.
Hazing is prohibited.
Yeah. Hazing is as defined in chapter, well, I can't find it right now, but hazing is defined in chapter, whatever it is there, is prohibited. We'll work on those, too.
Just for one example, under the child, under reporting suspected child abuse and neglect, we opened with, the North Redding Public School Policy reflects the content of chapter, like, we could do the same thing with this, right?
I mean, chapter 269, section 17, hazing organizing or participating, hazing defined.
Right.
But our bullying policy actually reprises the definition of bullying and cyberbullying. So, we, we're inconsistent about it. I think it's good to restate it because no one's gonna, I mean, just, it's convenient, right?
Yeah. As long as, as long as the wording is-
A d-.
We'll, we'll come back with some-
Through the chair?
Yes.
If you look at the policy, section seventeen, the term hazing is defined. So, it's-
Why don't we move that to the-
That's what I just said.
That's the actual wording of MGL.
That's what I just said, under section, I, that's, just use, reference two sixty-nine seventeen, that's where it's defined.
I still think it should be come back for first reading.
Yeah, oh, I agree, too. I think it should come back. I, I, I don't want that language in there that we have now. I'm also gonna ask John to change that in the handbook next year.
Yeah, it makes no sense.
So, can we do that? Just come up with some new wording for the first part of it? And you could take it right from, you don't have to repeat it word for word, but you could take it from section seventeen.
Or, you could just say, hazing as defined in chapter two sixty-nine, section seventeen, is prohibited, or forbidden, or whatever you wanna use.
Right, say that. But Karen, but we should look at, if you could, look at how we prefaced the bullying policy. It's a good suggestion.
If there's statutory language for these things, we should probably use it.
Yeah, if there is.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll try to get back.
Well, and I have weekly meeting schedules now, we probably won't get it next week, but-
We'll have to get it, but next week.
We don't have a policy subcommittee meeting until May ten.
All right.
Or, no, different date.
So, we didn't, we're not able to republish the whole thing.
No, it's all right. Okay.
Gives purpose of the policy subcommittee.
School choice, public hearing and vote. This used to be my favorite, this is one of my favorites under Dr. Trouton, and now it's becoming one of my favorites under Superintendent Willis.
Under the Ed Reform Act of nineteen ninety-three, there is a need to hold a public hearing annually on school choice. Becoming a school choice district means that North Reading will accept students from other cities and towns for enrollment in the schools. And once a student is accepted as a choice student, that student has the option of staying with the North Reading Public Schools until he or she graduates or withdraws. The district does receive a minimum, a small five thousand dollar payment from the sending district's chapter seventy funds for each student accepted.
Kathy, that's for each year then, right, obviously?
Yes.
Yeah.
But it does diminish. And then it goes away.
When the student graduates.
When the student graduates.
So, I'll open, I'll open the public hearing on school choice. Anybody have any-
Anybody in the public.
Anybody in the public like to comment? Any of the chairs? Anybody in the committee? I just know we, we have not had, I don't think we've ever been a school choice district.
Not in my experience.
And I think, I don't know, my, it's my desire to remain that way.
I mean, I don't think it's financially beneficial, that's for sure.
No.
As a citizen, I would think that, as an, and as a taxpayer, I would think that we should withhold those funds for our students.
Our own students, right.
Yeah.
I'd agree.
Any comments?
Well, it was jamming.
This time, I'll close, I'll close the public hearing. And with that done, I will then entertain a motion that North Reading will not participate in the school choice program. Jerry, were you gonna make a motion?
Yeah, I was gonna make the motion that not, to not participate in school choice because the program as is presently constructed ensures the needs of some of the children of the Commonwealth cannot be met. Not sure what that means, but that is the language that we've been advised to use and have used over the last thirteen years.
Right.
So, that's the motion.
Motion, second by Cliff. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all of them favor?
Aye.
Aye, close, unanimous. We have no bills in payroll, we have no minutes. We do have a budget update, Carl, correct?
Yes, we do, thank you. We have the March budget report in front of us. And picking up on a discussion of our FY fourteen budget, it's that, it's this report that we use to track the available funds for the following year at this stage. Obviously, the primary purpose of this budget is to track this year's spending. But picking up on Mr. Khashoggi's comments, we're hoping to be able to generate some unspent funds and roll them over for next year to allow us to provide some different services as outlined in, in our PS twenty sixteen. The most important fact that I wanted to share with you relates to school lunch. We've informally talked about this problem with school lunch this year, but I thought it's important to formally discuss it as part of a budget report. There's been some factors this year that are impacting North Reading, as well as just about every school district in Massachusetts. It's a very frequent topic of discussion amongst business managers in both urban and rural districts. And we're all faced with the tightened nutritional regulations, which are having a negative impact on school lunch meal participation. And it's extensive in some communities. There are, I'm noting in this report that our year-to-year lunch counts are down seventeen percent. I wouldn't attribute all of that to the new revised nutritional requirements, but the majority of that decrease is a result of those changes. We're all faced with it, and we need to do something about it because it's going to cost the general fund an increasing amount of money to keep the program in the black. To begin with, we did ask Chartwell early in the year, when we saw this coming, to work with us to provide an enhanced marketing or information campaign, some of it, of which you saw when they came to show us what a typical meal looks like. But we've also been doing student advisory sessions, we're doing presentations at PTA meetings at night. There's been, I'd be happy to go through, but there's been a host of activities that have been underway this year to try to stem the tide of the reduction in meal participation. We were also faced, by the way, this year with, on a year-to-year basis, we do have less lunch, lunch days offered because we increased the number of half-days for professional development, and we also increased the number of no-lunch days at the high school for the Niasc participation. And all those add up. On, on a year-to-year basis, the reduction of meals is about ten days, and ten days out of a hundred and eighty days is actually, you know, quite a bit when you think about what the impact might be. So, the, the second half of Chartwell's recommendations are forthcoming this spring. They have been asked to make a set of recommendations to allow us to get back into the black. And frankly, the next set of recommendations will be a little bit more difficult for us to enact, because speaking very candidly about the situation, we have to be aware of the fact that our student enrollment is going down. We've had to make difficult choices with teachers these last several years. And because labor is the single largest part of school lunch budget, that's logically one of the areas that they would look at. That's not an area we like to talk about, but it's something that we have to be upfront about. So, I think that in discussions with other communities, the hope is that it's gonna take a while for kind of the paradigm shift to take place. Hopefully, younger children won't be put off by whole wheat hamburger buns and more fruit and vegetables on their plate, you know, and some of the things that have been difficult for us to accept this year. So, I, I don't frankly imagine that you're gonna see an immediate turnaround on a month-to-month basis here. You're really, you're just not going to. I wish I could say that. Third point I'd mention that contributes to the difficulty we have in North Reading is, North Reading has a very, very low percentage of free and reduced lunch. And why is that important? It's important because when you have a higher percentage of free and reduced lunch students, those are guaranteed lunches, if you will, you know, that is a-
Money in the bank.
It's money in the bank. So, regardless of the conditions, if you will, those are revenues that you're getting. So, because we're so low here, it is those communities across the state that have the lower percentages of, of free and reduced lunch that are those that are having the most difficulty. Because if ninety-five percent of your students are not in that category, then ninety-five percent of your students can walk. So, I noted in here that, I'm sorry to say, that in order to stay in the black this year, we will have to increase our offset or subsidy to the program by the amount of thirty-five thousand dollars.
Thirty-eight thou, thirty, almost thirty-nine thousand, right?
Yes. I, I'll say to you that in the year two thousand, the school lunch program was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the red.
We've been in the red, I think, since I've been here.
But then we worked it down.
Well, we, no, we got back in the black. That, that was an enormous accomplishment for us to, to, 'cause this, that's a lot of money.
But we, didn't we allocate funds from-
Yeah, well, we, we now allocate money from the general fund-
Yeah.
-to subsidize each year. And that's, you know, we did a lot of things to get back into the black, including that subsidy, but we also, I think, offer a better product, cut a lot of our costs, increased our dependence on commodity foods, a lot of things we did over the years to get where we are. Yes.
Carl, can I understand that the middle school suffers from just time?
That's, it's all schools, isn't it, Kathy?
I'm not sure.
Just the middle school?
Suffers from what?
Time, not enough time, do you want?
I think it has added a few minutes to the middle school lunch, but it's still something that they're taking-
It's like twenty-something minutes, isn't it?
It's about twenty minutes.
Twenty-two.
I mean, how does a kid eat?
Well, I think it's always been like that, hasn't it, really?
No, 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 I'm not, I'm not-
Yeah, I think that's too short a time, right.
About the, the system, I'm just saying that it may not be enough time in general.
I don't think it is, and it's like that at most schools.
To the counter, you're right.
It's my understanding that it's so crowded, the kids get in line, some kids sit down with about ten minutes left to eat.
Five minutes.
Even five minutes, yeah. And that's, hopefully, that's one of the issues that'll be solved with the new school, because we won't have all the overcrowding.
The other thing is, what is Chartwell's doing to promote it to the kids? Are they doing samples and things like that?
Well, you know, I, I'm, another thing that has to be discussed here, and again, I think these are difficult decisions, but all communities have the opportunity to go with a management company, as we do, or to go self-operations. And the contract with Chartwell will be over at the end of next May, next June, excuse me. So, it would be a good opportunity during this next school year to review our options. I have said that to the Chartwell management, that this next year is a very important year, and we really need to work as partners with them and make some difficult decisions and improvements to, to get back into the black.
Kyle, you've been generally satisfied with them, though, haven't you?
Yes, I, we, yes, I have. I think in particular, we have a strong local director that they've given us. We like the flexibility. Early in our experience with Chartwell, when I first here, we went through two or three directors the first couple of years. And the reason I like a management company in this regard is, we have the ability to say, this director's not working out, we want a new one. So, it's, it's a little easier to make changes of that nature with a management company than it is with an employee. Okay, so, we hold the cards, and we're able to, you know, bring us in the direction we want. A company such as Chartwell allows, affords you a lot of advantages, some of which are mass buying, purchasing power. They, they do all of the ordering, and they're ordering it on an international basis. Remember, Chartwell handled the, the Olympics, I mean, that's how big a company they are. So, you get mass buying power. They do the accounting for you. In other words, they send us one bill each month for everything. You also have the ability to work with all of the nutritionists, with all of the, you know, support that they provide you. If you have a self-operation, you have one person. But there are costs with Chartwell, you know, you're paying for some of those features. In no way am I suggesting any, anything negative towards Chartwell. I'm, I've strongly been in favor of keeping them. But I just think in these times, it's an appropriate analysis to me.
Look at, I guess I'd have to see significant savings that would warrant going in-house.
Well, I think savings and, and what's the participation, percentage of participation of those districts where they have it in-house, and is it higher, is it lower, and if it's higher, why is it higher? I know there are districts in this-
I don't know that it solves your problem, other than saving some money by not paying for the management contract, that it's gonna change the, the rate of, you know, lunches being bought.
But why, why is the participation low? Is it because of the new menu that's being forced on us?
It's part of it, yeah.
And if that's a problem, then that's not gonna get solved.
Right.
What was a problem even before that, though, but now it's more of a problem?
You know, what I saw when, when we had a little demonstration here-
It was pretty good.
Was pretty good stuff, but, you know, but my taste, my-
Yeah, no.
My taste and the taste of, of the kids is very, very different.
I thought that was great.
Yeah, that stuff was really good.
But there's a lot of things. I think that, that the point that Michael brings up is legitimate, you know, there are kids that would much rather sit down immediately at their table and eat with their friends with a brown bag. That's not to say we're unusual in the amount of hours that we, or minutes we devote to lunch, it's just one facet of the, of the issue. So, I think the year ahead is a good one to do an analysis. Perhaps look at the pricing. We have been at our present pricing structure now for over five years. It strikes me as somewhat illogical to increase pricing when we're trying to sell more lunches. That's why I haven't brought that recommendation to you. But revenues are a factor here, too.
I think Chartwell's has to think out of the box.
They have to want, I mean, they wanna sell more lunches, too.
A frequent flyer program.
Something.
Place or something, but I think it's not enough to just say, you know, we're in the red. They've gotta come into the table with some ideas, whether it's give everyone a free lunch for a week and everyone try it out.
The problem, Mike, is I think this is, Kyle said, this is a big company with a lot of expertise, and I think they've tried a lot of things and thought of a lot of things, and I'm not sure what the answer is.
What have they tried?
I'm not sure exactly. I know today we were sitting with, Kathy and I were sitting with the director, and she's, she's very, I thought, innovative in some of the things she tries to do.
She's very sharp.
I think, and she has a lot of support from our district in terms of our administrators, and very flexible. I think that, to Michael's point, what are they doing? I'd be happy to invite them in and have them provide you a presentation for what they have done and where they'd like to go. I can tell you that they've been, they're often providing samples of new side dishes or accompaniments to kids, trying to get them to try them. They're trying to appeal to parents. There's a plan, we've had plans where we do kindergarten lunch with your mother or father, where you come in with your kindergartner to try to, you know, build the, build the foundation for future lunches.
We probably should have put a food court in the new school with a McDonald's and a Dunkin' Donuts and-
We wouldn't be able to do that.
And a couple of other places.
But, but here's a question. So, we're talking about a seventy-four thousand dollar subsidiary this year from, or subsidy, subsidiary, subsidy from, what percent of that is that of the total lunch, the total budget of the lunch program?
I wanna say twelve, fifteen percent.
That's huge, that we're subsidizing it that much. That, that, that's, that's way, it's way too much.
It's very high, very high.
Because we're paying a professional company, and then on top of that, we're subsidizing it by another seventy, seventy-four thousand dollars this year. So, I think-
It's too much until you have, you have to have, compare it to something. How much would it cost to do it in-house, you know?
I still think we need more information. I ultimately think that it's, it comes down to just what's common sense. We know that these are new regulations, this is a cultural shift, there are many things at play, including the management company and their strategies. The best strategies are gonna come from the students. We have to ask them what would make them by lunch. Ultimately, that's what it's about. And if they don't like the menu, we need to know that, so that that information can be filtered out. There's many, many different factors. This is, this, this, these nutritional guidelines are all part of let's move and the childhood obesity work, which my company does a lot of work in. And ultimately, it's about a whole school approach, everyone's involved. The school nurses could get involved and help us figure this out, because this is about promoting health and changing behaviors, which we know is really, really difficult, so I think-
What about surveys?
I think we could just, I actually think focus groups are way more effective in this, in this case. Define students who don't buy lunch, and ask them why they don't, and figure that out. And we certainly could do that, but is it worth the time investment? These, these guidelines are really difficult for kids, and they're, we don't, there's evidence that, you know, that's how we help curb childhood obesity, but it is actually a multi-level problem that you have to address, with physical activity, with social issues, and with food. And this is just one prong of that multi-pronged effort. So, I would just like to back us up by saying, we should not start with our company that provides services. They're already involved and engaged in this, because they have been. It's been going on for years. So, why don't we look, look at this? I'm sure the administration is looking at ways of figuring this out, because this is a significant issue. But it may just be that this is the direction we're going in, and lunches are gonna change because we have to change them, and kids are gonna go out and they're gonna change their behavior in the direction that they want to. So, that's the piece of the pie that isn't, sorry, I was using that analogy, that we have to figure out, so.
Jim, why don't we put on the agenda for, for the discussion at some point in time?
I think that's a good idea, and I, I think focus groups of some type would be a great idea, especially at the high school and middle school level. But I think the focus groups find out why- But I think the focus groups find out why kids, to get the kids that aren't eating lunches, why aren't you eating lunches? I, I do think the time is an issue.
And just ask them, we just need to ask them, "What would make you buy lunch?" That's literally the, the question we have to ask.
Yeah, why, what would change your, your eating habits? Why would you buy a hot lunch?
We're, we're not gonna solve child obesity in, in our lunch program.
Unless we can go home with the kids every day.
Because we don't, we don't serve it enough food...
Right.
And we don't give them long enough time to eat it to actually have much of an effect on their overall size.
And people who are against...
It's what they do when they go home.
Right. So people say that these regulations will lead to the spill-out effect, that people will actually go home and eat tons more food, because if you eat tons of low-fat food, that's a high-fat diet.
Right.
So, you know, I think this has gotta be proven out a little bit more, but again, it's a difficult circumstance, we have to comply.
So let's put it on the agenda.
Doing all we can to do it.
I will say that Chartwell has been extremely responsive this year to issues and requests that we've made. One thing I failed to mention was, when the new guidelines went into effect after about a month and a half worth of serving those lunches, I asked, you know, "Let's take some time and look at what we're doing." And Chartwell organized, they had six other food service directors from area communities come in and spend a day here to, to look at our food lunch program from a third-party perspective. So we had six other people doing the same job as Anna does from large communities, small communities, and they spent the whole, they, they watched the kitchen work, they looked at the presentation, they looked at our facilities, they made a series of recommendations that we've pretty much implemented. You know, there was nothing, there were no expensive items in there, just here's some ideas and suggestions. So, thank you for that. And, and we have done some surveys this year, we need to do more of them, and I like the focus group idea as well.
I think we might use some questions for it, because we actually did this in a couple of schools in our, why reinvent the wheel, but it's really as simple as three or four questions. And I think it'd be interesting at all levels to see where, where is this happening? So, you guys have done a good job figuring it out.
Anything else in the budget, Carl, that you wanna highlight, or is that the...
That, that was the big one, thank you, Mel.
Okay. Kathy?
What agenda would you like this brought back on? Is it by the end of this school year?
Yeah. I'd like to discuss for the end of the school year.
Yeah. When do we have to make a decision, Carl? What's the contract?
End of the year.
Oh, it's next year, yeah. I would just like to come in and, I'd like to discuss the idea of, of doing focus groups, maybe have Anna here to see what they've done already, and then for Karen or anybody else who has ideas to say, "Look, I've, I've done, we've done this, I've got some questions we could use, blah, blah, blah." Is that all right?
So, end of May?